Sign it, sign it, everybody sign it. It doesn't matter if you just say one word, it's fine, just sign it. This is your time to speak up. You're here in the audience, let's go show what your opinion is. Even if you're on the fence about speaking, you can always forfeit your time if you feel too embarrassed to, okay? But if you don't sign up, you won't get to be able to say it at all, even if you change your mind.
All right, so our commission is here tonight. We'll call the quarters and Rita will get that signed in chief. Those will be the items six and seven for the public hearing. So we're going to call it for the Monday, April eleventh Planning Commission. So if we do have all of them attended, so we'll do the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will start off, Seajus, any changes or additions to the agenda? So we'll do, go forward with approval of the meeting agenda. Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda approved. Next we'll move on to approval of the prior minutes from the March fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Got a motion, we have a second? Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, first we'll start rolling with the consent agenda, so these will be reviewed together. These are item twenty-two, these are bond issued for subdivision, the reduction requests or extensions for Concorde Springs Phase two B and someone Phase five.
So Concorde Springs, they requested a reduction. They requested a reduction, Public Services Team went out and met with them and they reduced the bond to two hundred and fifteen thousand from three hundred and six thousand.
Okay, and then someone Phase five?
Someone Phase five. I've been in contact with the project manager, they have yet to, you know, ask for a reduction, so we're requesting an increase in six hundred and seventy acres of that.
All right, so the consent, did we do these together? Any questions about these items? Got no questions, we have a motion to approve? Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. All right. Item number three, Willow Grove Phase one, Reagan Smith and Associates requests final subdivision plan approval for sixteen point nine seconds, seven, sixteen point nine seven acres, fifty-two single-family lots on Tyree Springs.
This is a final plan approval that you said for the phase of fifty lots. Nothing, we had some minor revision FFEs, the elevations to be included with some comments we had back to them. But one thing to note, this is the Willow Grove, there's also Willow Springs. We had, we had a resolution approved by ordinance to where they had to do in several phases, including the signal light at Palmer's, at South Palmer's in Tyree Springs. This was all to be done by Safe Harbor. Lennar's portion was a hundred and six thousand dollar contribution, as they're doing eighty-nine lots. So they did pay, make a payment to the city, which the city will pass to the Safe Harbor guys. So their portion has been taken care of.
And I'm gonna ask my goodness, maybe. When they got the quote, where would we come up with a hundred thousand dollars to pay?
That was eight, a hundred and six thousand, that was their impact fees, their, their, their own impact.
Okay, they're part of the impact, okay, not the cost of the lot itself, okay. All right, any other questions? This is the final subdivision plan approval.
All leads are based on the driveway setback.
Yeah, that's based on those approved in the final master development back in twenty twenty-one. Total eighty-nine homes in this building.
Got a question? Any motions?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second? Motion second, to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Item four, Beach Grove Development, request final master plan development approval. So this already has its own in place for a mixed-use development. A hundred and thirteen townhomes and eleven thousand square foot of retail space on Highway thirty-one south.
So this particular development was approved, we had a study session and several iterations of the elevation and some things that we asked them to do commercials, so they made eleven thousand square foot commercial in the front of the development. We asked them to change their elevation. I, I failed to put the elevations in your, in your package, they did provide it to me. And I had to develop a brino, so they're in front of them now. Their design is what we approved back a couple of months ago from the study session. There was some, some things that we had comments on the dumpster. I think you, somebody mentioned them being, they're being a shared dumpster. From the way I see it, this, these lots will have, they'll have garage, they'll be garage units, and so they have individual dumpster.
Truck service.
Yeah. But there was some challenging concern we had about the way the dumpster, first of all, the asphalt overtopping, the, the concrete overtopping asphalt. I reached out to the engineer, and this is something that we'll address in construction plan with the angle of the way the driveway faces. If you look at the parking lot across from the dumpster, some things that we may be recommending was striping that and not letting that be parking, even though it's only to be like a one-time pickup, once a week, once a place when we pick up. The layout of the dumpster still needs to be changed, so that was a bigger challenge that we found. On the backside, the fire department was okay with the hammerhead turnaround, the truck radius, the fire trucks stood back in and out of that development, so really.
You mentioned the hammerheads, are they, talk about these roads like Road F.
Yeah.
What about, the only thing I saw was just the intersection radius, it's drawn ninety degrees, Jason, so. Fifteen foot radius, any issue with fire truck?
Well, the, it probably should be more like the one you're talking about at Road F.
Standard of, yeah.
Twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five, so. Same thing, the, the general layout is there now, and they've addressed a whole lot of comments, but getting into every radius that they have and roadway alignments, I would assume it's going to be handled in construction. But I, I don't know that answer, whether fire has reviewed any of those specifically.
And I know at our meeting on this earlier, there was a question about the drainage. Jason, has all that water come through the pond, does it all flow to that direction?
That's their general intent, man, that's right.
Seajus, you had the elevations, so we pass it around?
Yeah, I think they're moving before you, you pass them up. These are consistent with what doesn't change from when he asked me to go back. Mr. Murphy, Mr. P, we had asked him to go back, they came in for a study session, planning commission wasn't happy with the design. Because they looked like we talked about earlier in our study session, it looked similar to what we had already gotten, used to let go. And his engineer went back and they provided something that we could all agree upon. And also for your information, this hundred and thirteen, there were seventy units approved prior to him acquiring additional five acres and adding the commercial piece. So he just purchased this additional five acre tract and then planning commission approved the, the final master.
Is this right adjacent to the soccer field?
Yeah, down.
His intention with the commercial be built similar to the residential at the same time, or?
Same time.
Okay. Now this one is unique in that it has, you know, keep maintaining the commercial price the city was looking for.
Be sure that old real estate.
So we do have some comments about the dumpster sign and some of the radius, make sure the fire department's okay with the internal road sign. Any other questions, or comments?
Seajus, I hate to keep beating the dead horse, but I feel we're getting tight D. Landscape goes all the way around it. Especially if they got to the third, touch with any of the neighbors. It starts out D in the beginning, then it's.
I think it's adjacent, I have to go back and look at that. Maybe adjacent property use, whereas adjacent property use, it's, it's a, if it's a, the similar zone, well, I know it's not a similar zone. I go back, I go back and look down and put that in the notes.
I just want to make sure we get the thickest we can between the townhomes and the neighbors' residential.
Would that be any stipulations of place on that agenda?
I would like to. From the straight, we start out with D and then we get up against the other, we go back to B. So if we keep D all the way around it, we're.
And I, if it all runs together, B may be a thicker buffer than D?
No, B was thicker.
Uh, we remember, it was one with the thicker underbrush, and I don't know, but we put that as stipulation.
Especially on the south side, the north side, the church.
It's just thicker, you can see the D has the surround on the drawing, and then look at where B starts. B extends out, takes, takes away all the undercurb.
I guess the question would be, would they go do the D more landscaping, or that same dimension? But I know we did make them do the thirty-five foot driveway. Maybe nicely intensifying the same dimension, but it's. We do have some comments about extending the buffer along the single-family, the roadway, the dumpsters, any other comments?
So that would be stipulation?
Especially along the, this is a single-family, it's actually, I would say, the north side.
Just a leg up, is that, you understand what they're saying about thicker buffer along the single-family?
Yes, and I think it's shown on this full set that Sean gave. Where the front, where we got shows the front up here in the corner is D, and then everything else goes to D, so it should be a thinner, not as thick.
And that's fine, so you're saying a D then?
Just D, the thickest that we have around there, just, just other neighbors.
You want to just leave it at the thickest we have, because like I said, there is some, some, some differences in B and D. So we can, I guess you could request the thickest.
Yeah, which one, should be D. Let's just get, let's just get the neighbors, make just the neighbors hold up.
Okay. Any additional questions? Motion? All right, we do have a motion, with stipulations as discussed, we have a second? Motion second, to approve with stipulations, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Item number five, this is a recommendation to the Board of Mayor, this was previously discussed last month's meeting. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor Alderman to amend zoning ordinance section forty-two oh one, new section for development centers for campgrounds, see this tomorrow.
Uh, so the bigger, bigger takeaway that I got, or assignment I got, was to be a little concerned about the tents and this being a, a, you know, allowing tents to stay, it was a hundred and eighty days that we found as standard for, for these RVs to stay in a campground across the country. But I did address the campsite. Now, we couldn't stipulate no tent camping, or a percentage of tent camping, because that sort of gets them to a frenzy of, it's right. But fourteen days was the, the average that I saw across the country on the camps. As far as, one of the comments was the camp, the campers or the trailers being on some subsurface or subpar surface, that's handled in our design standards, so I didn't add anything to that. I talked with the public work teams, and that is handled by what they can add in our device and, I mean, our regulations, something we can add.
And RVs are still up to six months.
Yeah, and that was, like I said, a standard.
I think the big deal we talked about was the time limit.
Yeah.
Is that pretty, you think the six months is pretty standard?
It was, I was, and, and again, this was Florida, California, I think they say the word. California, it was state parks, state parks have a minimum, it was averaging a hundred and eighty days.
That's.
Now we, you know, when I send this to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, we can reduce, certainly reduce it. But, but the problem was that if we say thirty days, and, and somebody said before that all they do is go to another, another campsite, switch to another campsite. But we do have in here no permanent camps, so I think we can enforce that. She's crazy. I'm scared. No, but we go enforcement, if we could, we could keep our eye on that.
Let's start pulling in, Seajus, we're going over that. Beyond that. Do you feel pretty confident?
Yeah, I feel it's, it really stands, like I said, I pull this ordinance from a trustworthy city. But, but change would be changing.
There's a growing market, so it's a good, a positive. Any other questions about this? I know we did talk about this last month.
And for those that don't know, we had in our standards, and I know probably many don't know, but in I one and I two, for I one, we had amusement services, which was allowed, but we didn't have any design standards or development standards. So that, this is just adding development standards for campgrounds, otherwise they could come in and they could do what they wanted to do.
So this is a recommendation to the Board of Mayor Alderman for a zoning ordinance amendment. That's on Alderman, next one.
We did a public hearing on the last, last month. We did a public hearing last.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, this was, this was five. Anybody want to speak on this? I think there was, I'm sorry, I don't mean no one spoke, I think everybody's number seven, most people signed up. Anybody had any comments on this before? So we do, any motions for this, recommendation for Board of Mayor Alderman?
I'd like a motion with this.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Item number six, will be a public hearing. This is regarding the subdivision regulation, this is a bonding for developments. So Seajus, I would like to explain if anybody wants to speak on this.
Okay, yeah, so when a development comes in, their first phase, their flagrant, what they have to do is any, any public facility or infrastructure, we've got a sign up, it's called a bond or a surety, basically insurance that they will be able to cover that until they provide, or the city is. Currently, we have a six percent increase every year, like in the beginning of the agenda where he was talking about the consent. So basically, we're increasing from six percent, given inflation, we're increasing at fifteen percent. Seven percent based on inflation, I think it would have taken to thirteen. The, the comments I got was why not even fifteen on top of that, so I think that's justified. So, so this would increase our surety bond to fifteen percent when a developer was coming to renew. And in, in, instead of to get from under that bond, because it affects their credit.
That's their evil, that, that's implied inflation, then.
Yeah, I mean, because we'd be on the hook for, you know, two thousand seventeen, two thousand thirteen prices and materials being printed for that much.
This is a, this is a subdivision regulation amendment, so this board is the only board that makes that decision, so it is a public hearing at this level. I know there was a little confusion, anybody have any comments on this?
Did you say it was thirteen or fifteen?
Fifteen.
It is fifteen, thank you.
It's six now, it's going six to fifteen.
Six to fifteen.
I was only saying that the seven percent, you know, is average nationwide, seven percent inflation, which would, if you add, that would be thirteen, but we increasing to fifteen.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we have no one to speak on that, any discussion items? Any motion? Proving a second, to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. All right, number seven, this little thing, we do have, you know, several people, fourteen, signed up to speak on this. Then we'll have, of course, the applicants will have a chance to speak also, I don't think their names are on here. So they won't miss a head of sign up, so they'll represent the project. But we do ask three minutes on these comments, you know, we'll be efficient with it, get people's point across. We'll be respectful, listen to you guys, and just be respectful of your comments. So we'll kick this off, item number seven, Burris Ridge, request recommendation to the Board of Mayor Alderman for rezon four hundred and twelve point sixty-six acres from R twenty, Old N C Residential, that's a suburban residential plan unit development. The proposal also includes a preliminary master plan for nine hundred and fifty-nine single-family homes on New Hall Road. Seajus, you want to do a little summary, then we'll open up the hearing.
Uh, Burris Ridge, this was approved back in, I think, the early two thousands, it was in the county. The county had originally looked at this, and we, the city annexed it in. This was known as the old golf course community, their jacknippers actually came to, to the city, I think that was cool at the time when they were designing the golf course. It actually linked dormant, and in our ordinance, it states that if a, a pud is dormant for twenty-four months, then we can take it, and we have to notify the, the property owner that we're taking it back to our base zoning, R twenty, which is, is what we did, we sent a cancellation of the adopted plan. So from that, we, we've been approached in the last three months by the developer to, you know, they wanted to bring the nine hundred and fifty-nine unit development. So the city had been working with the developers and the, the site designer on, you know, our regulations, what we wanted to see. We reiterated some of the, the possible challenges for getting this approved, and they have been working with T D O and with the county, because these are county roads that are going to be impacted. And so, so they're, they're, they're well versed on what to expect from this meeting, so from that.
I said, I mean, if you all agree, I say we give applicant a few minutes to give a brief presentation, we'll open up the public hearing for comments, then of course applicant can respond and anything. Give them. Who would this give us your name?
Uh, yes, thank you for having us here, my name's Dwight Kaiser, I'm a landscape architect, founder with Kaiser Voguen Design. Would it be appropriate if I set an easel up with a drawing, do you mind?
If you don't care halfway, maybe turn around where people can see it.
Yeah, this is, I'm going to start with a little quick history, that this should have some of the old.
We'll have it turned around, you guys can see it too.
And I will certainly rotate it around. Again, thank you for having us here, my name's Dwight Kaiser, I'm the land planner. Consequently enough, I've been the land planner for the most part since two thousand and five, when this project first came forward. And what you're looking at is the golf, or the, the project known as Bear Creek at Burris Ridge. We were saying back in the day, about two thousand and four, two thousand and five, by Mr. Chip Hellman. We took this through rezoning and preliminary master development plan submitted, and were, and then finally through final master plan submitted, and we were approved for six hundred and twenty-seven dwelling units, of which two hundred and fifty-one of those were attached to townhomes and retirement quadruplaces for four units. The, the final master development plan and the first phase construction drawings were approved in September of two thousand and five, and earthwork commenced in two thousand and six, but as most of us know, the project hit hard times and was subsequently suspended in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and fourteen, Fifth Third Bank, who held title to the property by receivership, applied for and was granted approval by the Municipal Planning Commission to consolidate what were then existing twelve parcels into one parcel to aid in the future of the replanning of the property. In two thousand and fifteen, the property was acquired by Walton Development Management, who subsequently retained K V D, my firm, to prepare a residential master plan without golf. Plan number one. Plan number two. This is a two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen town zone, a rezoning preliminary master plan for a neighborhood center residential plan development with nine hundred and forty-nine dwelling units, of which one hundred and eighty-one were attached townhomes at a total density of two point three zero D U A, was approved in February two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and twenty-one, the property owner Walton Development teamed with the residential home builder, Lennar, who I believe you all are familiar with, who subsequently retained K V D and Cesso, our civil engineers, to develop an updated preliminary master development plan. So tonight, Lennar is seeking a rezoning preliminary master development plan for a suburban residential planned development with nine hundred and fifty-eight dwelling units at a total density of two point three two D U A. It's important to note that we are no longer seeking neighborhood center zoning. But, and therefore, there are no detached, or no attached dwelling units as part of this, this is strictly a single-family project. Real quickly, I'd like to introduce the team, Mr. Anthony Sparrow, who represents the property owner with Walton Development, is here tonight, so is, so are Mr. Randy Mickle, Kevin Sturgill, and Ms. Wendy Dietz, who represents the builder, Lennar. We have from Cesso, our team, civil engineer and traffic engineer, Mike Donahoe, and Robert Matko, and Gaudam, Bella, and I, represent land planning and landscape architecture team. Any of us would be happy to field any project-related questions as we move forward. So I'll take this down, and you'll all, are more than free to pass it around and look at your. Right, ten, old history.
Sejus, you mentioned that in, that preliminary master plan was approved in sixteen?
Yes, sir.
Was the final master plan ever followed up with that?
The final development master plan was not submitted, they were working towards trying to find the right relationship with builders, and then as time went on, COVID hit and everything got, you know, kind of waylaid. So we're coming back around again. Now to the planning, any, any good, all good planning starts with the planner understanding the topography of the site. Plans, in my opinion, should respect and minimize earthwork and the impact on natural safe areas. This site with Mill Branch and the other major drainage areas naturally, naturally creates five distinct development zones that are reflected in this plan. So we have Mill Creek, you have one, two, three, four, and five zones that are created by not only the topography, but the drainage areas as well, and, and all of these are blue line streams. And with those come the, the required. blue line streams, and with those come the, uh, the required, uh, buffers and, and setbacks. These naturally occurring drainage ways and steep areas will be utilized for hiking trails that connect to the street sidewalk network and passive recreation areas, which will connect the five zones or neighborhoods of the community. In addition, the community is proposed to include three active recreational amenities that will include swimming facilities, court games such as pickleball, um, and numerous other active recreational opportunities. Sprinkled throughout the plan will be additional open space, parks and greens, which are noted here in the, the green areas, that we use to, uh, form the nucleus to the subneighborhoods of each one of these communities, and, uh, give a little bit of identification to those folks that live in and around there. So the combination of these green-laced parks and open space and amenity areas will contribute obviously to the residence quality of life to be found in the total of one hundred sixty-five acres of dedicated open space. One hundred sixty-five far exceeds the sixty-eight acres actually required by the zoning work. The general development pattern is defined by single-use activity on all individual lots. The street networks are defined by a combination of both grid and curving near streets reacting to topography and, and, uh, natural save areas, and depending on the topography and site condition, includes moderate distances between intersections, typically seven to nine hundred feet, uh, is, is proper planning for a good block length. As was just handed out, this is an example of the five series of architectural home offerings that will be provided throughout the community and will offer numerous opportunities for resident housing based on the life stage of each resident. Um, we have a senior section that is basically this beige area up to the north, all centered around the existing pond, and then there's other housing and home sizes that are reflected in the plans that you have, and they will continue to be refined hopefully as we move forward, so that specific home, uh, a, a home menu will be associated with, with each one of these. The community offering includes alley-loaded houses, running the proposed Burris Ridge Parkway, and these are the homes indicated here in brown, looking onto the Parkway, you did not want to have driveways coming off of that Parkway, so that's why we're going with a rear-load alley. Conversely, Burris Ridge Parkway, which will be a seventy-foot right-of-way, will include, in some cases, planted landscape median islands, or in cases where we're front in the alley-loaded street, we'd like to do parallel parking to, for guests and things like that. But again, it was very important for us not to have driveways coming onto the street. The, uh, the remainder of the, the homes, uh, are, uh, a combination of front-loaded and side-loaded, uh, within the, the core neighborhood. Our roadway sections are generally local streets as it relates to the, uh, local code, plus or minus fifty-foot right-ofways, and you can look at the detail of each one of those sections, and we will continue to work with Cigis and the, uh, the staff in, in finalizing all these. And except for, as I said, uh, the, the Burris Ridge Parkway, which will actually connect New Hall Road to Swift Road and act as the primary community access, uh, throughout. We feel this proposed community readily emphasizes interconnectivity, housing diversity, and a mixture of lot sizes as outlined in the White House Comprehensive Plan, I believe that was adopted in two thousand nineteen. We have strived to incorporate pedestrian-friendly, multi-use paths to link the proposed neighborhoods and major resident destinations such as the amenities, parks, and natural open spaces. And with that, we respectfully request your approval of this suburban residential planned development application, and are more than happy to entertain any questions you may have of me or our staff. Thank you.
Okay.
You can't, since they're up there. Probably be better to have the public here.
If you don't care, during the public hearing, maybe flip around to the second one?
Sure.
That way I could say the one you were presenting is the proposed.
And, and this is the same plan, it's just, this is pretty grown, I'm technical. I'll, I'll turn that around, if that's okay.
All right. All right, so we'll start the public hearing, I'll read these names in order, and I think Cigis should keep our time.
Yes.
And if I mispronounce your name or all that, but John Clipper?
Present. Um, I'm John Clipper. I, uh, I live on New Hall Road. I'm, uh, very familiar with Burris Ridge. In fact, I met Dr. Burris in several occasions. He'd probably be rolling over in his grave if he knew what was going on, but with that said, I moved up here fif- no, twenty-five years ago, I moved out of Brentwood. I moved up here for a lifestyle choice, and I cherish it. Now, I'm not so naive to believe that the Walton Group would not sell this property, and I have no issues with that. I'm just, and you folks seem to know and understand the topography very well, I do too, I've walked it many times. I'm not sure you really understand my point of view, and maybe some of the other ones here, your point of view, the disruptive nature that a lot of this, it seems to be out-of-control development that's been taken place, and by disruption, traffic pollution, noise pollution, light pollution. I would imagine, probably five years from now, I'm not sure if anybody, anybody's going to be able to walk out in their backyard front and look up and see the stars, it'll be just like Brentwood. So, I'm rather discouraged about all that. I would only ask that you just reconsider and help me, really, maybe you can answer it, or somebody from the Kaiser Group, maybe just try to help me wrap my head around zoning, I think, the low density, and, um, kind of the trickle-down value, for kind of the benefit, not just to me, but for all, a lot of these people in this room, that live up and down New Hall Road, thirty-one W, Highway seventy-six, Webster Road, Union Road, Swift Road, just kind of help us understand, again, the value, what's, what's the benefit? Understand the benefit to these folks, all right? But I'm just trying to understand, why do you need to go from, what is it, seven hundred to like over, close to a thousand right now? Help me understand, if you would, and I appreciate you folks giving us a chance to kind of give you our opinion. Thank you.
Uh, Philip Kelly?
How y'all doing tonight? My concerns are the roads, uh, there's lots of people here that's lived here all their lives, we can't get out of our driveways today. If you put nine hundred houses in there, it's going to be from two to three cars to every house, so we're talking about another twenty-seven, eighteen hundred, twenty-seven hundred cars there. John mentioned Dr. Burris, uh, he was a good friend of mine, I farmed that land for years, run cattle on it, so I'm very familiar with it too. Really don't see where you're going to set nine hundred houses on, but, uh, I guess you can do that. Uh, I don't see how you sewer, he's going to handle it, it's, it's pasty, I think, pretty much right now, I think that would be an issue. Uh, the impact on our schools, uh, is, they're running open now, it's always too, uh, high school, junior highs, all of it. Uh, the lot sizes, I hate to see the land used up in one-acre lots, but you still got to be able to handle the congestion of the houses, I think Tim made a good point on the lot sizes and, uh, so, you know, I don't live right against it, but it impacts me on the roads in every direction you leave there, just about, uh, because Swift Road's going to run into Union Road, which is already a mess, and, uh, seventy-six, nobody has to tell you about it, so, uh, I just wish you'd take into consideration, and, uh, there's people in this town now that's putting their houses up for sale because they don't like what's going on, and relocating. I talked to gentlemen today, he said, I didn't think I'd ever leave, but he said, my house is for sale, so, uh, we, we need, need to keep it a place that people want to live, not to sleep. Thank you.
Jared Sheil?
I'm Jared Sheil, uh, I live a little bit off of New Hall Road, I have a family that lives on New Hall Road, um, I'm currently running for, uh, County Commission in the district that is impacted by this, I'm knocking on doors, I'm talking to all of the people that are going to be impacted by this, and I'm, I'm finding out what's burning a hole in their mind right now. Overdevelopment's an issue on everybody's mind, we all know that, it's not a surprise, but the fear is real. People are concerned about their roads, people are concerned about their schools, I constantly hear concerns that schools are already overrun, worries about having to take on new debt to build schools, I hear worries about roads being unsafe, I see people dying on the roads, the last time somebody died near the seventy-six and New Hall Road intersection, uh, was a pretty sad day, I think, for all of us, and because we all know how bad that intersection already is, and we haven't done what's necessary to fix it. I think most of us know that the intersection of New Hall Road and thirty-one is a problem, especially during school zone, uh, school times, uh, cars coming out of the school zone, usually they're going faster than they should in the school zone as it is, uh, and then they're immediately exiting that school zone right at New Hall Road. We are going to exacerbate that problem unless we are intentional about managing the development here. I know that we want to work with T-DOT on these roads, I understand that, um, T-DOT has, uh, not been super responsive, the times that I've talked to them about dealing with this, and I don't necessarily have the faith that that's going to happen in the future. The last time we had a major problem, I spoke with our chief engineer, and he literally laughed at me and said, nobody has asked us to fix this, why in the world would we bother lifting a finger? That's a problem for us. When we're looking at this new development, we have to assume in the state of Tennessee, you have an average of two cars per household, so we're looking at about two thousand cars on roads that are already overrun. New Hall Road can appear safe and quiet, and then a car can come by at eighty miles per hour, and that is a problem. It, it scares me to death, my girls are playing at my mother-in-law's house, we can't even allow them to play in the front yard. It's already a problem, how much of a bigger problem is it going to be with two thousand more cars? I said I was running for County Commission, my slogan is sustainable growth and shared prosperity. I don't see how this is necessarily sustainable growth yet, but I do have faith that working together, uh, we all as community can figure out how to have sustainable growth here, and right now I don't see the shared prosperity in this either. This is single-family dwellings, people do need a place to live, and I understand that, but, uh, when you're bringing in a new development to an area, you have to take into account the support that the existing residences are going to lend to that area, and when you have pure residential development, you don't have mixed use, and you just have more problems. Thank you.
Stacy Vaughn?
My name is Stacy Vaughn, and I've lived in this area, in the New Hall area, for, me and my parents, for over fifty years. I understand that development is coming, and I know it's going to happen, but I implore each of you to do some research on this and at least large in the lots. We do not need a PUD. White House has numerous PUDs, and if we all admit the truth, it ends up in rental units, and they're rundown. I do not want that in my area. White House has, has a problem with the infrastructure over on New Hall Road, we do not have the infrastructure for this, and other subdivisions in the area did not have proper infrastructure, and they're suffering from that. We don't want that here. We know this is probably inevitable, but I wish that y'all would consider larger lots. All of our homes over there in that area are basically an acre-plus, I would like to keep it at least in that area with the same dynamic in the neighborhood that we have. If we add nine hundred, over nine hundred homes, you can imagine two cars per home, that is nineteen hundred and eighteen cars on New Hall Road. Can that road suffice that? Can it handle that? The traffic on thirty-one W and seventy-six? Guys, sometimes it takes me ten to fifteen minutes to get out, to take my kids to school in the morning, or for them to get to work, so I implore you to please do your research and make a, a wise decision on this for the rest of the residents in the area. Thank you.
Denny Greer? Is that right?
Denny Greer.
Denny, I'm sorry.
It seems like my concerns are the same as most everybody else here is concerning the traffic on it and all. It used to be the American dream was for a, a young couple to get married and buy them five acres of ground and build them their own home on it, move out of their parents' home, it's, uh, very evident that, that dream is pretty much gone. Uh, nobody can even find a half acre of ground anymore, let alone five acres of ground. My, uh, I have made numerous calls with T-DOT about the, uh, uh, highway intersection that's in question now at the end of New Hall and seventy-six, they did put up new stop signs down there, really some very large ones down there that made it very easy to see. The problem's not stopping though, it's probably getting across that highway. My granddaughter, in the last two weeks, risked her life trying to get across that highway and got T-boned and totaled her car out. From my understanding, White House Police Department responds to an average of at least two a month, go down there at that intersection where there's been numerous accidents, and, uh, I'm sure, uh, I know of, I've heard of one lady that was killed down there, but I'm, my biggest concern is what everybody else's is. I don't, I am not against growth, and I'm all for whatever helps White House, causes White House to grow to be a, a home or a city where everybody wants to come and live. My parents are actually buried in White House, they're in the cemetery right there in White House, so White House carries a big, uh, uh, big place in my heart, if you would, if you want to look at it like that, but like I say, my biggest concern is, I love my granddaughter, and if she had got killed there at that intersection because of the growth, and what happens? The big subdivision that's already taking place on the crossplain side of the road, everybody's using New Hall Road as a cut-through to get off of seventy-six over to thirty-one W, and then the natural, especially whenever the traffic is bad. And, like I say, the biggest thing right now is, in my concern, is safety. Development, I'm not trying to stop it, I know it's going to, as it's been said, it's inevitable that it's going to happen, but safety should be the biggest thing on everybody's heart. This whole development, no matter how much money been spent on it, or how much money we spend on it, is not worth one single life, not a single life, should have to die on account of the traffic problems here, and that, my biggest concern is that y'all will consider all that. Thank you.
Roger Dent?
Hello, I'm Roger Dent, I live over on New Hall Road. I'm on the map, kind of the island, uh, of, of, yeah, of, of the old, right, of the old one, there was only about seven, or probably twenty or thirty lots, I guess twenty or thirty lots behind us, and now it's, uh, I don't know how many is actually there, but there, now, now we've got two entrances going into this whole area back here, and I don't think that connects to the rest of the neighborhood, so I do have a problem with... So, I do have a problem with some drainage right there, there is like a retention pond beside my house when they put that road in there. And with that many homes and stuff back in there, I just think, we already have a drainage problem now. And I have some videos of that going through my backyard already. And I think it's just gonna get worse for that. The, uh, the traffic, it's like everyone said, it's New Hall Road's like I-65, you know? And a lot of the kids are using that road not to get on these main roads. And I see 'em every morning before and after school. And it's like the gentleman said before, it's just a matter of time, there's probably gonna be some kids hurt or killed on that road for the, the width of the road and the intersections. If anything else, I mean, I'm not totally against this and I'd love to see a golf course over there like it was. I accept that, you know, and I'd love to see it again. Or if they would eliminate the, the smaller lots and go back to big lots like everybody wants, I think they would, they would get a lot of positive out of it. But, uh, we have another school down the road there as well that is behind there with a lot of kids coming out of there, private school that's, uh, off of New Hall Road as well. So, not only White House schools and Heritage, you have another school that, they have to come up and down past that road. So, it's more kids on the road. The, uh... At each end, Seventy-Sixth and Thirty-One, I mean, I would, I would suggest because of like they said, like people talk to D-T-Dot and, uh, the county and stuff already about this and even before all of this, back when the golf course is, and I, I was, I was there every day with them when they was doing the golf course, they were real good friends of mine, you know, and I was helping them every way I could. But I think the red lights need to be up on Thirty-One and Seventy-Sixth before this goes in. You know, if nothing else, you know, I, I'd like to see the lots get bigger and the, and the red lights and the traffic fixed before they start breaking ground. And this other little neighborhood that's where there were a few lots behind our house originally, there's a whole lot of, uh, houses and lots back there now. I know y'all can look over your maps and see, but, uh, I'd like, I'd just like to y'all take all that into consideration.
David Nutt, is that where you live right there?
This is, this is, this is where I live, right here. And then you've seen it before according to the, the amount of lots that were behind there before. I think I had seven, and, and this is, I think, I don't think this was the original golf course. No, I'm talking about when, when the golf...
That's the original one.
The other side.
The other side.
Okay, when the golf course was here, and if they could go back to close to that, you could see it, I think there was like seven to ten lots behind me back here. You know, now I've got a, a whole neighborhood, and that's what it looks like. There is a whole neighborhood in my backyard, you know, and I, and I, I'm not against growth, but I am against that much, so if you can take the three drawings and go from there, that'd be great. All right, thank you.
I'm David Nutt, and my family is on property since like in the early sixties on New Hall Road, which is, we're actually on Swift Road Extension and we touch, uh, Burris Ridge and all. But, uh, those, the roads is a problem. Right now, we can't even get the county to put gravel on East Road Extension, uh, you know? And we've, we've talked about this a lot. On some of your maps, it doesn't show it. On other maps, it does show E, uh, Swift Road Extension. It's a, it's a big problem, uh, with traffic coming through there. And, uh, I, I just don't think it's a good thing. Uh, we've had fires over on Burris Ridge and the fire department can't even get there to take care of it. You have Millersville having to come to do it. Uh, you, uh, we've had two fires in the last two months, uh, three fires in the last two months. And, uh, is the city of White House going up their fire department to where they can take care of nine hundred homes as well? I mean, they can't even take care of a simple grass fire now. Uh, you know, that's, that's a whole lot to consider, uh, to me. And I just don't think it's a good thing. When you add more to it, uh, more houses than what was planned, uh, it's not the quality of homes that would've been with the golf course. I just don't feel like it's a good thing. Thank you.
Paul Farmer?
I'm Paul Farmer, and I just wanted to, uh, reassert some of those things that have gone out. Uh, raised my kids, I was right around the corner there on, uh, Ploton Valley Road, where raised all my kids, I went to school down the street there. And so, we've since relocated, but the, it, it's dangerous for me to check my mailbox where I'm living now. And driving down every day, uh, it, the traffic is already getting so bad, the school system is already flooded. Um, my friends that are first responders are telling me it's difficult to get to all the responses as we're continuing to grow. So, we don't have the infrastructure prepared for the volume. And I guarantee you, if we do continue to develop at the pace we're going, the, the homes are all gonna be there long before the infrastructure follows, where we can support that. And I just want to, you know, go on record that I'd like to see the infrastructure built out first. I'd like to see some funds going to the schools, to the police department, to the fire department, to the different people in the community that can really respond and support all of these families going there. And I think it's more than two cars per household, is what, I think it's two point three or...
Probably three.
Two point four, something like that. So, it's not even just gonna be double the amount of houses going in there, it's gonna be even higher than that. So, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time re, you know, saying the same thing that's already been said, but it's just going too fast and we implore you guys to please pump the brakes on how fast we're doing this. I don't think anybody in here is against development, we just wanna do it responsibly and we wanna do it where... I've got neighbors right now that are just saying, "I'm not gonna fight it, it's growing too fast, I'm just gonna move out." And these are the, the core people of our community that have made White House such a pleasant place to live, and I, I hate to lose that, so I'm just reinforcing what's been said.
Douglas Blackburn?
Douglas Blackburn, I live on Hall Road. I've owned this property for thirty-two years. This was a fantastic place to live, couldn't ask for a better place, it's just been wonderful. Now, like everybody else says, the traffic. They found out now that they can go through Hall Road and cut through and get onto Buffalo Road. And it's a freeway in front of my house. I've got about three hundred, three, three hundred something road frontage. I've got a, a small farm there, got livestock. And people throw stuff and they throw it over into my field. I go out there all the time, it's fast food bags, it's beer bottles, beer cans. I'm not opposed to anybody drinking a beer or whatever, but I don't want it thrown to my property where I have to clean it up all the time. And, uh, like everybody else is saying, it's just a traffic nightmare and crime. Big crimes up, nobody's talked about that, I think crime's up like thirty-seven percent in White House. What's it gonna happen when you put these less expensive homes together? You're bringing the riffraff out of Nashville that can't afford there, they're gonna get up here and you're gonna have more crime. I've not had a thing stolen, nothing from my place, to the last couple of years. And I've missed stuff, ran outside the barn, whatever, people been in my barn. And it's disgusting. I'm not opposed to building over there. But please build houses that people will take care of and be proud of, not these cluster crap that you got. You talk about getting a fire truck in there, getting it close enough so you can put, put the fires all out. Well, you're gonna burn five houses before you can get one foot out. Build a house where the flames don't get to the house. I've walked that property, I know all about that property. And all this stuff they're saying, all these greenways and all this stuff, a lot of it is steep. It's too, you'd have to, uh, rock climb. If you wanna rock climb, it's a good place for it. It's got nice creeks run through it, you're gonna have runoff. When this has a pavement runoff, that's a big pollution, the oil off the pavement. I'd say please, put less houses on it, make it a beautiful neighborhood that we can all enjoy and try to keep some of the crime and the riffraff out of our area. I told my kids, I said, "I want to die in this house, this is why I want to die." But the encroachment, I mean, now it's causing me so much stress that I don't, I guess I'll have to go somewhere else to die. Appreciate your time.
Jennifer Bennett?
I'm Jennifer Bennett. Um, there's not much I could say that hasn't already been said. I'm just a simple mom, wife, um, these are my neighbors, and we love where we live. Um, when we, when we knew of the development previously as planned, um, the number of homes seemed reasonable. Um, you know, it was not exactly what we would hope to have any, you know, addition or to add to the traffic, but it just seems to be that this project has grown to a point where we cannot fathom. Um, New Hall Road does not have a shoulder, um, up and down that road. My daughter, when she was learning to drive, she hit a mailbox on that road. Unfortunately, um, the people were so kind and wonderful to us with it. But, um, I will just say that I, I, I cannot imagine my life daily impact. Um, we've lived in that home since twenty thirteen, we've been residents of White House since two thousand and six, and I have lived in Robertson County for my whole life. Um, I love this place and I, I want to be, I wanna be here. Um, we just refinanced our home, we wanna stay. And we would like, we, we are not against growth, as others have said. My kids have gone K through twelve through, um, Robert F. Woodall, graduated as seniors twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, crazy birthdays. But I'm just, we've, we've been a part of this community, we love the people, we love where we live, and we would like to see this done much differently than what has been presented.
Roger Ray?
Uh, well, I've lived here over fifty years, I went to school in this building. Uh, I purchased two lots, actually on the golf course at the time. But this year, I don't, do not like it. I had to move to Florida for twelve years, I lived in a house with zero lifeline, I hated the place. I was glad when I got to retire and come home. Uh, New Hall Road, I think, needs to be red light on each end, like they said, a base road put down, because I know how stuff goes, you get building it and then you forget about everything else. It's like you crown the schools full and then you, then you build a school. The roads are overcrowded and then you build a road, and then that just pull out more. My son-in-law, at the end of New Hall Road in Seventy-Sixth, a person hit him there and it killed that guy several years ago. The traffic is a big issue on Seventy-Sixth, like they say, Thirty-One W, New Hall Road. If they could build the size houses, the nice houses, like was, was coming with the golf course, be no problem. But this year, I'm just afraid there's gonna be a lot of, of light issues. Thank you.
Is it Paul Rarrett?
Oh, sorry, um, it sounds like it, right. Yeah, how you doing? Um, my name's Paul Rarrett, um, I moved here about three months ago. I came from New York originally, I've lived there thirty years. Um, moved to Colorado for six years and I moved here because I enjoy not being six feet away from my neighbor's house. Um, it's peace of mind, I like the quiet. I, I know I can play music as loud as I want to and my neighbor's not gonna call the cops on me. Um, my biggest concern, I, I think, um, I'm all about, you know, I, I, I don't mind people moving into the area. Um, I mean, most of the grievances people are making, I think we should keep at least an acre per, per house. You know, keep the houses further apart. Um, and the main issue I'm gonna have with most of it is that it's water, wastewater, right? Right now, I'm on, uh, on a septic system, which most houses are right now. So, uh, development this big will force the city probably actually update services, right? Where's the crap going? You know, it has to go somewhere and is the utilities actually able to support almost four thousand people with nine hu, with nine hundred houses? You know, that, that's, because now that's gonna, if they have to run new utilities, like a, a septic system, um, on New Hall Road, does that mean we all have to now tie into the city system? Right? Which also brings up, you know, tax reasons and anything else, everybody else's utilities will go up. You know, um, I, I'm just here, you know, I'm, I'm trying to retire here. I'm only forty-two years old and I'm planning to be here for a very long time. And, um, I'm glad that all the neighbors came out tonight. Um, I think there's a very big concern about just adding too much, you know, too much too quickly. You know, um, an extra nine hundred houses, I mean, New Hall Road's what, one-way, it's the one-way street. As I mentioned, there's no shoulder either. I can't even pull off, I mean, if I have to pull over for an emergency vehicle, I have to pull into someone's driveway, which is, you know, not even that easy, so, um... Yeah, I think, uh, um, the, the concerns have been spoken, and, um, I, uh, I'm glad to have the time to talk to you guys. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Stephanie Mitchell?
Hi, Stephanie Mitchell, I have been in my house about three years and we came here because it was a great small community. I live over, over on Metal Lark Drive, so near Thirty-One W. Um, I don't want to diminish what anybody else said because I, I would not diminish. I don't wanna repeat what anybody else said because they all make excellent points. So, my, my issue, my biggest issue with this is the, how many houses are being built on this property? Um, it's just too much. And what is the developer offering to the city of White House? Are they building us a new fire department? Are they building affordable housing for our police and firemen to live in? And the fast food workers, the retirement community? Yes, they have a small area for the elderly, but they got rid of the, the attached homes, which may be more affordable and less maintenance for that elderly generation um, that I feel like we're pushing out of our city due to inaffordability. So, I just want to see, as everybody else said, development is inevitable. It's how we approach that development and how we are respectful of the current citizens who live here in addition to anybody else who's coming in. Because people are gonna hate these people who buy these houses. They're not gonna hate them, but they're, they're just gonna be like, "Oh, you live in one of those houses." We don't need another PUD here. We've got a bunch, from what I can tell. We don't need that, that additional strain on our infrastructure and our roads, um, the traffic. And let's just listen to the citizens, nobody wants this. This wasn't part, this high density, this PUD was not part of the master plan, if my, if I remember correctly from when I read it. So, you know, for changing the zoning this much to go back to this, I understand it was previously approved, but to go back to this again, knowing what we know and all of the other developments that have come to light since then and have been approved, we don't need something this dense in our community, so, thank you.
Is this Rebecca Johnson?
That's correct. Hey, see, just I don't have my time to start that because I want developers come on in, 'cause I'm gonna be dressing them, so, all right, come on in, guys. They've been standing in the hallway as wallflowers out there. Is everybody in?
There wasn't much room.
No, we, we're, we're dressing you, so we wanna see your faces when we talk to you. All right, so go ahead, please.
Sure?
Uh, yeah. When I look out my crowd of, uh, my neighbors, I see good folks. Um, why I see, we also see you, 'cause y'all stick out like sore thumbs. Y'all don't dress like us?
Let's see them, second.
Okay.
Just sitting pretty, hold on.
It, it, it...
Get the job done.
I understand.
Talk to us about the project.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to make a point in the fact that they come into our communities taking from us and not giving back in their wake. And that's my whole point, the traffic congestion, the crowded schools, underfunded infrastructure, um, the housing inequality is directly a cause of y'all's actions. And it's time for change. The status quo of anything goes for a developer should be over. We can't afford to continue to pay for expensive lifestyles. Everyone here is struggling and we cannot expect the taxpayer to continue to pick up for what y'all were unwilling to pay for. And, um, I once had a developer tell me that they, they did what they did because they overpaid for the land, but why should their bad investment be our problem? And, um, if we allow it to be, then it is going to be. So it's time for all that to stop. And I'm not fooled by this, uh, green, green space, because I'm a botanist, and I can tell you that all that green space is ecological garbage, and it won't do anything to provide, um, to mitigate habitat loss and flooding. And my last, uh, my last comments are gonna be now to the board because we need to have more transparency, and adjacent landowners need to have, um, when proposed zoning comes, comes up, it needs immediately be mailed out to adjacent landowners. And then also public comments need to be allowed at every single meeting that's open to the public and not after multiple meetings when the proposal is basically approved. And, um, because this rounds out constituent voices, and it makes me very upset and very angry. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, like, I just wanted to address y'all personally because this affects us all.
Thank you. That was the last of the public hearings. We do appreciate everybody, uh, for working in their time and being respectful. I guess, Steve, you have a comment?
No.
I would say we have, we have discussions with the developers, uh, to answer, because they, there's some questions with, from the, of, public hearing, and there are probably some of us.
I did want to just point out that, uh, uh, everything in my staff notes addresses everything that we've discussed with developers. We met with Robertson County, because you guys are on a Robertson County road. It's not even a city road. Uh, and seventy-six is a T-DOT road, so T-DOT has been part of that conversation as well. So these were some of the main things that we discussed, uh, aside from the plan, uh, but how it was gonna impact the road. So I, I think I reversed them on everything that was gonna be spoken of.
All right, so let's start with traffic. I think that's, uh, everybody knows there's a concern with that. So guys, if you wanna, there was a question about what you want to propose with this development, uh, to make for the off-site improvements to the adjacent roadways?
Absolutely. My name's Kevin Sturgill. I'm with Lennar Homes. I appreciate everybody's opinion, and we respect your opinions, and we care about that. Uh, well, I do have a, I have a traffic engineer here who can answer a lot of these traffic questions, and our goal is to improve the situation. You might not believe me, I get it. But, uh, we want to improve the situation because you'll see from his reports that it's currently failing, some of the traffic intersections, and we want to help that. So could you speak about that?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Robert Matko. I work for C E S O, and I'm the traffic engineer for the project. And, uh, I'd like to start off just by talking about why traffic impact studies are, are done. I know a lot of you know that, but for some in the audience that may not. Uh, what we look at with a traffic impact study is we follow national codes in putting together this study. We also have meetings with the jurisdictions that are involved in reviewing the study, uh, T-DOT and also the city staff. And the reason these studies are done are to figure out and find out how do we mitigate the development that is being proposed before you. So that was our task, is to, to take all the information from T-DOT, from your city staff. Uh, that, that involves, I'm not gonna walk through the whole entire traffic impact study, but it involves, you know, counting the correct locations where, where those impacts are gonna be seen the most. And then basically studying those intersections, we actually did counts out there, um, not by, by people. They were actually video collected and downloaded, um, through a, a, a very sophisticated, uh, software that MyoVision is the name of the company. So again, very sophisticated way these studies are done today. Uh, so I'm not here to tell you your roads today are not working correctly. I think you know that. What I'm here to do is tell you how those can be fixed and what was proposed in our study. So I've heard a lot of information tonight, and I know a lot of you are, are, uh, in, in, in the, in the audience here as well as, um, Planning Commission members, uh, feel that, that there's traffic issues out there today, and there are. Uh, so what is gonna be done out there? So when we go through and study all these intersections, they're assigned a, a, a grade, like in school, with an A being very good and F being very poor. Now, uh, some of the intersections out there today, they have movements that do fail. So, uh, some of those fail without even this development, uh, being, being contributed. Uh, we also were, were, uh, assigned a task too of including a few adjacent developments that have already been approved and including those in this study. So this study was very conservative, and there is a list of improvements that are outlined in the study that will mitigate this development, and not only mitigate it, but will improve the levels of service out there. Those improvements include traffic signals. Um, I know I heard one gentleman state that, uh, there should be signals on both sides of, of, of New Hall, uh, both ends. And that, that is one recommendation. I mean, those are, are warranted. Those are needed. Um, I know at Union, um, I'm sorry, New Hall Road and, uh, seventy-six, there's, there's issues out there today. The intersections are not aligned. There, there are not turn lanes in, in directions. It's not signalized. Uh, so again, there, uh, there's a list of improvements that we have. So I, I could understand the frustration if, if we were coming in here and saying, hey, traffic is great. We're not gonna do anything, and it's still gonna be great. Um, I think everyone understands that there's traffic issues out there today. But again, our biggest task is how do we not only solve some of those issues today, but how do we mitigate our, our development's impact? And I believe we did that in the study. I believe the improvements that are outlined and what we will be actually incorporating, and also, um, you know, sharing some cost on some other improvements with other developments. I think, uh, I think that's a really good, uh, step in, in, you know, again, mitigating our impact. So, uh, just, just to finalize, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, specific questions. I didn't want to walk through the entire traffic impact study. But again, uh, the study is, uh, I don't even have the appendix, but it was probably, you know, five, six hundred pages. Um, it is very conservative. Uh, I believe we addressed the issues, and we're still working with staff and the county and T-DOT on some of those issues as well, and we'll continue to do that. So again, thank you for your time this evening, and, uh, again, I'm here to answer any specific questions you have on traffic. But again, thank you.
Is there a question about?
May I ask him a question?
You can ask us, yes.
If they're so willing to work with the community to keep this project moving, um, I need their property on two sides. And I think if they were in good faith, they would first widen our roads and make sure they get done and put red lights at both ends and help us get their situation under control before they start all their mega stuff. Uh, because if we could see that they're gonna help us first, and it will help them in the long run, but help us to get the road fixed first and the light situation on both ends of the road. I think people would be a little bit more into them if they, if they showed good faith upfront, uh, stuff like that.
What do you mean? See, to, to discuss the improvements, I mean, I think, I know there's a list up on, but.
Yeah, um.
I think everybody, the Planning Commission's gonna know what.
Yeah, um, so there are two, and, and you can speak to this, but there was a no-bill scenario, uh, and then there was a Burris Ridge scenario. One of the things that, uh, and I know this will be brought up, but there are some previous developments that came in, parks and legacy farms that came, and, and it was also a failed, uh, intersection of seventy-six, uh, and New Hall at Cross Plains there. Uh, but again, as he said before, it was already a failed intersection and, and, and you're coming in now. Uh, but to address these things, uh, and I'll let you speak to, to the recent email, uh, because they had to go back and revise the traffic study after what was, uh, sent in. So that came in Friday, uh, Thursday of last week, I think. Um, so, I mean, I got the email, but I didn't know if you wanted to go through, uh, each of the, the no-bills?
Yeah, I can, I can go, go through, you know, everything and, and, you know. Again, my understanding is when these, these developments, you know, before they reach a certain peak, these improvements do need to be in at a certain time. Um, it's not like you can build this full development, this full subdivision out, and then put the improvements in. So, uh, I.
I can, and to address you, what we did on, uh, various projects, we set, set it by resolution that before they get, the developer get their first per- permit or before Phase is built, then they would have to have such improvements, uh, as stated in the traffic study. So that's one way to control that.
This has happened in other, in other neighborhoods, and it never come to fruition.
Was it done by resolution while I was here?
I don't know if you were here or not, but it has happened in plenty of neighborhoods and PUDs where they said, okay, it's gonna be this. We're not gonna move on to the next phase. And guess what? They did, and we're left with the dregs.
I'd say, I'd say, let's, let's talk about, we have our public hearings. I mean, we need, we're doing an hour and a half now. But I think if we could get a list of what roadway improvements proposed, I think that would help everybody.
So, uh, I can start from the beginning. So it says the no-bill scenario. Uh, now you can chime in with.
What, honey, what's the no-bill?
Um, responsibility others.
Yeah, if you want, I can read down through them too, if you'd like.
If you would, if you would, and, and say what, uh, you guys have proposed.
So again, a no-bill scenario just, I mean, those are issues that exist today without this development. Uh, so at New Hall and, and seventy-six, uh, the improvements would, or, or, that need to occur are signalizing intersection, align Cross Plains Road, which is the north leg, with New Hall Road. Construct a hundred-foot northbound and westbound left turn lane, uh, with a hundred-foot taper. Construct a hundred-foot westbound to southbound left turn lane with a hundred-foot taper. Construct a one-hundred-foot eastbound and northbound left turn lane with a hundred-foot taper. Construct a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot southbound, eastbound, left turn lane with a hundred-foot taper. And then construct a one-hundred-foot westbound and northbound right turn lane with a hundred-foot taper.
At Union Road.
At what point, nobody's gonna be able to remember. Everybody wants to hear all that, but they don't be able to remember all that everything. At what point, if you got what you wanted tonight, at what point would this company be willing to physically spend this money and make these things happen?
Well, you know, again, I, I can't, if you want to handle, if someone wants to handle the cost, but, uh.
So what is the current grade, please? I know, I'm, I'm with you, Mr. Murphy. I think we should go cut to the chase, get some of the highlights going here, right, respectfully?
Keep it concise, right.
So current grade, you guys got that?
When is the traffic lights going up? Yeah, I mean.
Okay, so, so we're, we're willing to, to handle our direct impacts right away with Phase One. However, there's some impacts from other communities also. Uh, so it needs to be, you know, kind of shared. We're also willing to contribute impact fees for the community overall just for whatever situation needs to be handled that, that we don't directly control, if that helps. Now, there, as we grow, as we get one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, then, then there's other improvements that will happen. But right away, we would do the, the, the widening and at least one of the signals, whatever the, is probably required.
That's correct.
At that, at the beginning.
There'd be a lot of construction traffic too, that we got.
And that's part, and so we, we'll have new residents, we'll have construction traffic. We, we don't want to be a negative impact.
Continuing all the other improvements, that's, that's one.
Yeah, so, so again, if you think about New Hall and U.S. Highway seventy-six, essentially aligning the intersection, putting turn lanes all around the intersection. Now, that isn't as a no-bill. That's existing today, and that is still, we're working with the, the city and the county on looking at, uh, you know, shared proportions and whatnot and, and responsibilities and whatnot. But those, those improvements are gonna need to be made at, at some point. Um, addition to that, again, um, at Union Road and seventy-six, uh, there's a westbound and southbound left turn lane that's proposed and a north, northbound and westbound left turn lane that's proposed. Now, again, that is still under the no-bill condition, so those are improvements that are needed today. And again, uh, you know, we'd be looking at a, a shared contribution on possibly what, what this development's impact is on that intersection. Um, you know, as it relates to other developments. Some of the other improvements here, New Hall and thirty-one, again, signalize the intersection, install an eastbound and northbound left turn lane and a northbound and westbound left turn lane. Uh, now, some of the things are gonna be needed, uh, from this development immediately is at, uh, New Hall Road and seventy-six is to extend that, uh, northbound to westbound left turn lane, um, an extra, I think it's another twenty-five feet. Uh, Union Road and seventy-six signalize that intersection, so that would be something that would be done, you know, immediately. And then New Hall and thirty-one would be to extend that left turn lane as well. And, uh, New Hall, and then of course our site access driveways, we would be constructing those. And then we also, uh, looked at, and we're, again, discussions with the city and the county on what happens to, I believe it's Webster Road, that they're kind of focusing on now. So there are substantial, you know, improvements that we're either gonna be fully responsible for or at least partially responsible for. And, uh, so again, once these improvements are done, uh, and, and I'm sure, again, you know, looking at these levels of service, like your level, uh, you know, a letter grade in school, we entirely mitigate our impact and actually improve what's happening out there today, so.
Absolutely.
We're gonna lose more of our land while you, to make these improvements?
They don't be done within the right of way.
It would be public right of way, but we can give you a summary if it helps of, of the five things. This is a Phase One, and this is a Phase Two, and this is a Phase Three.
I think, I think that they, they just don't be.
Because it's gonna be, yeah, there's a few.
And, and they will, and you're correct, they will be phased, but for instance, all the site access points would not be constructed at once. They'll, they'll be constructed as, as the phasing goes. And, uh, you know, sit, with a, with a traffic signal, if it's warranted today, then it, it should go in. But if it's not warranted until maybe two hundred homes come in, then that's when the signal would go in. And again, we would work with city staff, the county.
I'm sorry, I mean, we're gonna need, I mean, this planning commission's gonna need to see that. That's why we recommend them to, to Lennar Homes, that's what this is all about, traffic. Okay, so that's the list of improvements. We appreciate that. And I, there was a question about sewer. Um, I know it's originally had sewer designed for the Burris Ridge project. Was there any issues with?
They, uh, I think they received their, uh, capacity letter or required for capacity.
Yes. My name's Wendy Dietz. I'm with Lennar. We have received our sewer capacity letter from, um, the city, and we will be required to upgrade the sewer system so that the capacity is in prior to the homes going in. So that is an improvement that, um, I don't know what your current capacity is. They, uh, they had enough for about seven hundred homes. Because we are increasing the number of homes, or proposing to increase the number of homes, we have to increase the size of the line, so that, so that they can handle the capacity.
There's, I was a question about that. Uh, see, just, just probably right now, the city resounded back. What time was that?
Uh, it started in twenty twenty. I think, uh, it may have been early, late twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-one. Our ordinance, as I said before, states that if a, a project lays dormant, uh, for so many months that the city can do a cancel, there was a cancellation of PUD, and so, uh, we thought it would be appropriate to cancel the, the current PUD that, uh, it was under and take it back to the base only of R twenty. So it's at R twenty now.
So R twenty, or how many acres are there?
Four twenty-six.
So how many, what does that mean, under the base zone, just that?
Uh, it would be, uh, and I don't really calculate.
Two hundred acres, gonna be like eight hundred and fifty something.
So it's, uh, four twenty-six, four, four and three.
So three plus sixty plus one.
We'll have unusual lane, we'll have road. That'd be two point one, assuming a perfect scenario, that we easily is like fifteen, twenty percent from that. So it'd be around the two, maybe a little less, under what those turn limits would be. So still, even under the base zone, we're seeing down zone, it's still gonna be a substantial development.
And in checking the comprehensive plan, the future land use shows this is an R fifteen or an SR-PUD?
Yeah, I think it's.
It's actually twenty thousand, I think.
Right, the current, the current zone is R twenty, but in looking at the comprehensive plan that the Planning Commission adopted, it's, uh, the proposed future land use is R fifteen and SR-PUD.
Y'all have any other comments or questions? So this is a recommendation to the Board Mayor and Alderman? I mean, I would think we definitely need to have that defined, what's gonna be done, who's gonna, how much and when. I think that's, that's not even so much the project's about. Because it's gonna be homes even under the base zone. It's not like, it's two hundred blocks now. I mean, any other questions?
I got a question.
Oh, we're, we've already had a public hearing.
Good God.
Yeah, comment?
I asked earlier if, uh, if, uh, this is too easy for me. I, I was a little kid in White House riding my go-kart up and down that neighborhood that y'all were talking about, uh, in nineteen fifty-eight. So, yeah, I've, I've seen it all change and, and, uh, I understand where all these folks are coming from. We do have to continue having growth and there's nothing to be done about it. I asked a question earlier if, uh, if we could change from R twenty to R forty or whatever. And the rule, maybe the law, is that it is zoned R twenty. And that's, uh, for the time being evidently that's as undense or open as it can be.
Since this is an orchard park, it is coming to be.
Right, right, right. And, uh, so I, just to start the discussion, I, I would, uh, you know, this, I would not recommend the way it is now to, to the, to the board now. It's, uh, but it, it, I mean, it sounds like, uh, it would be hard for us to, uh, if they do everything they say they're gonna do and they still want it and they still feel like they can earn the income that they'd like to earn, uh, that R twenty is, is probably where it would end up. So that's, uh, a house for roughly over, how you pay.
I think the point a gentleman mentioned about EOT, like we said, life in space, if they ever wanna do any improvement.
Right.
We gotta, if, if they're proposing New Hall seventy-six, turn lanes, traffic signals and New Hall thirty-one's traffic signals. I think that should be a key zone in. Because if we're thinking, you know, a couple hundred lots different, but that is a, you know.
Right, right. And, and I've been here, what, two or three meetings, so I'm, I'm, we're very wet behind the ears. So I don't know if, uh, uh, there should be a way to say, okay, we're going to approve two hundred houses. And only before those two hundred houses are built and sold, X has to have been completed before we approve two hundred more houses. So, so you can, uh, you, you gotta stick here to hold out to say, well, you said you was gonna do that. You want, yeah, you're gonna do it if you wanna build another house. So, that stuff can be worked on.
Some of the things, the stuff they're wanting to approve, count some of the Robertson County approving it. Their, well, it's us approving it. So they may approve it all day long, but they might not get done because they don't get approached by somebody else.
Right, large contingencies. And you guys were talking about, well, we're gonna get, uh, some people from over here to go along with us and some people from over here to go along with us, different developments in the county and whoever. Well, uh, it's not approved till you got them people together and say, okay, we got an agreement in, in principle. And if you guys will approve us for up to whatever, then we've got an agreement put together. We get all that in writing and look at it and say, okay, when X amount of houses is built, X amount of things are complete, and on and on like that. It's.
The other thing I'd like to see is, you know, the traffic study and what they're, what they're willing to do and pay for before we go any further.
Yeah, that's.
That, that, that to me is everybody, then we can go from there. I can understand the time of, that would be proposed. Wish I could something I can join.
Yeah, unless, unless if my mom says I can do it, I'll do it. That's no good. That don't work in the real world.
And there was some question about drainage, uh, on some of the premier lots too. Six or seven. All the drainage is gonna be, uh, taken care of with our detention ponds. And after they retain it, they have to clean it up before they go somewhere else. So we've got that, that. And we also, I'd like to know who's doing what. I'd like to say, we're, we're, we can't need to say don't help with this or T-Dot will help with this, but I'd like to see something in writing that, you know, who's doing what, whether they do this development or, you know, rest house.
T-Dot's ten years out. I, I should say before, uh, that project, I, I said before, it would be.
But for them, but if they go to T-Dot and say, I'm willing to put up so many hundreds of thousands of dollars in intersection, that may move it up the list. Well, I put it, my passion.
Possibly, possibly.
Chairman, if I might add something, um, we, we would like to request a deferral. I think that we're at the point where we've heard a lot of the comments. We have some additional homework for the commission. Uh, we'll continue to work with, uh, Sege. And we, we need to continue to work with Robertson County. We had a great meeting with them the other day. But there's more to be addressed with exactly the points that you bring up is that there is going to be other municipalities and jurisdictions that, that are, um, need to come to the table in order to ensure that everything that we need to do can be put forward. And we will also summarize, uh, timing on all of our improvements and we'll bring that back for the next commission meeting.
I also like to add this and you can consider it or not consider it. When this Burris Ridge came up originally, it was in Robson County and I was building commissioner at the time. I would suggest, that's a lot of their concerns and you all have a community meeting.
Okay.
And these people here that are concerned, if you all Chris, get the, uh, names and addresses and send them all a letter. And if you all meet at some point, in some place, and I think a lot of this can be resolved. It was when the government came up. Because I know there was a lot of negativity when it came up. And these people have legitimate concerns and I, I don't know, but you all, everything y'all saying you wanna do it. Like this purpose says, it must, someone's gonna have to be done in phases. It will all, you won't build eight hundred houses and get those roads all gone and the, the, the lights up at the same time. That's not gonna happen. But I strongly suggest you all meet with the owners of the area that this is gonna affect and it's gonna be pretty far and wide. And that means you're gonna have to go to Santa's office and pull names and addresses and figure you all profit. And then you all can work some of this out between yourselves, besides coming back to the committee.
I do, with the revised plan, it'd be an all single family. Uh, Burris Ridge, like you said, had attached product, had quads, which there's nothing wrong with those, but I think there were some questions about us maybe having too much of that uh, throughout the city already approved. So this is primarily a single family area. So I definitely think that's a, a benefit.
And for where it's worth, uh, twenty, twenty thousand square foot is as big a lot as we can require. And I, if I were you, I'd be thinking, okay, I'm, I'm gonna get my ducks in a row and I'm gonna sell this HUD. I don't think you're gonna sell the HUD here. I think you need to look and see if you can make money at the way you wanna do it on a twenty thousand foot lots. And before you start spending a lot of time, money and effort doing other things. Because I, I'm just one guy talking, but, uh, uh, that's, that's as big as we can make them. And, and if we could, from my point of view, if we could make them bigger, we would. Uh, so.
I would say this property, these people are correct. You know, I bought it too when this was under construction. And it's got some naturally sensitive areas. I definitely think we don't go on flats backing up. You know, there's a, like I said, a bluff. Uh, it's pretty profound. There's a creek that goes through the project. Definitely, I think if it's R twenty, definitely you look at some open space still.
I believe if you study the plan, it, it, it absolutely adheres to those edges.
So there has been a request to defer this item, uh, orientation, and that, that will be come back with more traffic issues defined. Do we have a motion to that effect? Yeah, a motion, second to defer, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Can you both?
Thank you.
I guess last motion, uh, I think that's it, isn't it? That we will be adjourned?
Thank you.